John, just checking in. Can you hear us here at City Hall? Dennis Brown, I just want to see if you can hear us on there.
I can. I'll test my mic with you as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, it is 5:30 PM. I will go ahead and start off the city council meeting for tonight. City of Bellevue, Idaho, Monday, January 27, 2025, 5:30 PM, city council meeting.
Amy?
Mayor Dorgani.
Yes.
Council President Shay.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Councilmember Mononey.
He's muted himself.
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Obena.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Yes.
Read him.
How's memory today?
Yes, okay. Sorry, just checking.
That's okay.
Notice of agenda compliance for Idaho Code 74-204. Finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204 within 48 hours prior to the meeting at the City of Bellevue City Hall, the post office, and on the city's website on January 23, 2025.
I move that the notice for the January 27, 2025 meeting was completed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Oh, one favor?
Aye.
On all per conflicts, as outlined in Idaho Code 74-404, any conflict with tonight's agenda from the council?
No, for me.
Moving on to item three, mayor and council update. I'll just do a very light update, just want to acknowledge again. We put in our newsletter, but all the parties that were involved in kind of the fire efforts. Just thank you again to all the different entities and community members and cross-county collaboration that happened to take care of our city. We put some, a little bit of information in our newsletter, just about some fire safety that came from the chief. On these cold temperatures, paying attention to space heaters, making sure they're plugged into grounded outlets, and making sure the rating is correct for what they need to be. Stay warm, stay cool, or stay warm, stay safe. Take care of neighbors and, you know, our departments are here for you if you need. Whenever you need, in case of emergency, and information, so. Thank you for that. Any updates coming from the council?
I got a nice letter from the city today. About the water pressure. I did receive that, okay.
I'd like to follow on that comment. Because I think Diane's response was a little different than some of the other residents in her neighborhood. And I know that one of your priorities is transparency. In your new administration and I, for one, have not been exposed to the detail I think is necessary to generate, I believe, PSI leading report. I'm curious as to what happened, that everyone be aware of how this was initiated, that there was an incident that created this original problem? And then the subsequent, how the problem's been addressed, as well as, you know, these residents lost service. And when you're paying for a service, there should be an expectation. And so I'm wondering what the cost of this will be to the city, either in providing refunds to these folks, or what it's cost to go through and try and resolve the impact of the original incident, which I think was all above board. But things maybe we need to prioritize for the city that these incidents can't happen in the future, that we need to look at them.
Okay, and just to clarify, the residences didn't lose service, the incident we're referring to was a water pressure issue in the December timeframe. So there wasn't a loss of service, there was a question of flow. And so that's the incident that's being referred to. And the letter that's being referred to is, that was sent to Shantrell residences to basically address kind of the process and procedure of what happened. The incident was reported. Our public works department went out and did diagnosis on it. We came to a conclusion of the issue and then communicated to the residents of how to resolve the issue internally at their own home, or to reach out for further information. So I think, yes, looking further into how we can better receive incident reports and respond to them, but I just want to clarify that there wasn't a loss of service for this incident that we're referring to. And so let's talk a little bit more further on kind of your concept of monetary compensation and the appropriateness when we're discussing these incidences. And I think that's something that I would be happy to dive into more with.
Yeah, I just thought maybe we could find, just I wanted to bring it up so we can begin addressing that and prioritizing it however it's appropriate to begin to establish the protocols and, you know, acceptable levels of service and that. So I just wanted to find a place where it can be added to your.
Yeah, I think that, thank you for bringing that up. I think that the way that it was researched and addressed to date feels satisfactory. But I think there's always improvement on how incident reporting and communication can be handled moving forward. So, thank you. Anything else on from council reports? I'm gonna move on to public comment, and this is for items of concern that are not on the agenda. And it's public comment will take from inside City Hall and on Zoom as well. So if you'd like to get the public comment, please state your name, your address, and keep your comments around three to five minutes max. Not seeing any public comment in City Hall. Is there any public comment on Zoom? Okay, I'm not seeing public comments, so at this time, I will go ahead and close public comment. Moving on to item number five, this is our consent agenda. Those open for discussion, if there's anything anyone would like to discuss. You can go through it line by line, or if there's something that someone wants to jump in and pull out for discussion.
I have some questions about past positions versus previous year.
What's your item referring to on the agenda?
I guess it would be the treasures. The treasure report, I don't know.
Okay.
What page?
Perfect, so let's just see, any comments on minutes at this time, twelve minutes?
Yes. The I was left out of the voting for maybe all of the votes that were taken. So I've made notes where I should be added as having voted. And I'll just pass those on.
If you could pass those on to Amy, that would be greatly appreciated.
Otherwise, nothing to read on minutes.
Would anyone like to discuss anything in the claims section? Item number B, of the claims. It's January 13, 2025 through January 27, 2025.
There is, is that, I mean, it's broken up between wastewater and water. Is that appropriate? And how is it, are we charged twice, or is there just one charge?
No, there's one charge and a split.
Okay.
Because the two big projects that are the impetus for getting that program going are what are starting that.
Okay. Yeah, that's all I had.
Beth now is jumping out on claims to discuss. I think Suzanne had some questions, it sounds like, with the treasures report.
I think it might actually be item D.
Item D, okay.
End of your visitor report.
Okay. Julie, why don't you just give us a quick little, just an overhead on the treasures report? That one, this is the one ending December 31, 2024.
Right, it's a regular monthly report.
Yes.
And everything is pretty much on par. From here, there is nothing jumping out that I wanted to take long time, but if anyone has any questions at all about anything in particular. But everything's pretty much on par for where we should be.
And Suzanne, let's move on to your question on the end of fiscal year 2024 financial report. Do you want to?
Uh, yeah, so in the cash position, at least, versus the previous year.
Which page are we referring to?
Oh, yes, page, I better remember that next time. On page eight, right, in item D. And there's, there was a notable change in the the general fund, so I was just curious about that.
Okay, let's take it one another time.
Right, that's okay.
But the general fund is the, you're talking about the checking, 8993, the third one?
Uh, yes.
Yes. Okay. That is our checking account that pays all the bills for all of the eight departments being run for the city. So that ebbs and flows along with the cash flow, tax payments coming in. For example, we just received today our first payment of $469,000 from the county, which was good because our funds were getting low. So it ebbs and flows, it's just the checking account. So on that particular day, that's where it was.
Okay. Would it be, so I'm assuming the same with the sewer fund?
Correct.
That's the checking?
Yes.
And then what about? And I believe we discussed earlier in the year, the issue with the LGIP water funds, those two funds would be down because the monies had not been transferred because it was an unprocessed.
Right, you were talking about the cap funds from
Uh, yes, would those, would those be those two water 1506 and water cap 2442?
Well, normally, they would come out of the water checking and go into the LGIP that is saved. And the checking at this point in time, for the water had 84,000, but that was not enough to make those transfers and still have funds to operate.
Right, so that's just, that's why there's that change from that memo a couple of months ago, saying, we're not gonna be able to swing this, that's this. Okay, then there are several having to do with sewer. Again, not the checking fund aside, there are three separate sewer funds that seem to be on the rise. Is there, again, any particular reason they would be higher now than they were last year?
They're all earning interest. Some of these are earning $1,500, $2,000 a month in interest. So interest has been really good this year, so that keeps them rising. And then, for example, we transferred the sewer cap funds, so that increased the one fund. So always trying to put as much as possible in there to earn as much as possible for us.
Okay, so in the sewer related numbers, we're up over $400,000 from where it was last year around this time, again, the majority of the
Right.
But how does this fluctuation impact sewer fees? Does it impact sewer fees in any way? If you had a deficit in any of these areas, would sewer fees be a mechanism through which they were changed, or vice versa? So these are, could not have any, okay.
No.
So these funds are for future development?
They are.
Okay. Um, okay. Um, great, can I also have, I have a question about grants? And all the grants that are currently on the books, we're, that's not necessarily anything put against them.
What page are you referring to?
Now, we're on feed some wastewater grants. Yeah, and they were in the general fund, actual to budget, and then admin, actual to budget, water, actual to budget, buildings and grounds, actual to budget, fire, actual to budget, so pretty much all of them have some grant line item. And I was just curious how they, do they always just kind of appear at the end of the year unspent? Or, we don't really know, we'd have to drill into why, like, for example, grants within buildings and grounds, there's 20,000 and nothing's been spent in the last quarter, because that was that? Is that just the one?
That's the grant we just received from the community health academy.
For the, for people.
For development projects.
That's been earmarked, yeah.
Yeah, I understand, okay.
But it just came in in November.
Okay, so these are just, some of these are just putting on their, their late grants that were received, and there were some spending in. Okay, it looks like everybody's got something going on. Okay, great, I was just trying to understand where those placeholders are. And then, and share something about that too.
Our, since our budgeting cycle is in a certain date range, grants don't always match up exactly our budgeting cycle, so there could be holdovers or things, amounts that can sit there because the cycle for a grant may be from January to December, or, you know, whatever, however they come in or are dispensed, just for clarification.
And they typically run more than one year in terms of of the cycle of receiving and spending, and it takes time for all of that to happen.
And I think that will be my point, literally come back to it, but thank you. How do, how is this with the water fund revenue and investments? How, where are we seeing, or if there is any specific documentation against the three and a half million dollar grant? Is there a separate project that tracks that, or is it always just kind of?
No, I have created a separate line item for tracking all of that.
Okay.
As of the end of the fiscal year, there really hadn't been anything financially happened.
12,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just received that, actually.
Yeah. All right. Uh, I guess that's it then. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You can always come see me about any, any of your
Okay, I'm still trying to figure out, well, who is it appropriate to speak to directly, and if it's appropriate in a foreign, so thank you.
And this is a question that kind of goes back, I guess, to the treasures report. And I appreciate the invitation to kind of come visit, and that would be helpful, I think, to make it a little better feel. Maybe among my various notes on that report, the only one that kind of wanted to ask a question about was in the wastewater, the actual to budget, it's page one. It had the one item that was at 1,480% of the budget. And it is, it's the R and M equipment, non-auto. And I just was, you know, curious since that was so far in excess of the line item for the budget, what that
I can tell you exactly what it was.
Very good, thank you.
It was a water truck repair of over 40,000 that our contractor had arranged. And was not something that was budgeted. So it threw everything out of whack. So we may have to amend later.
Thank you, yeah, I mean, I understand those kind of expenses occur, and they start often sort of glaring, and I'm of this nature, but thank you. You're welcome.
I make the motion we approve the consent agenda, including the approval of minutes, January 13, 2025, approval of claims, January 13, and then January 27, 2025, the treasurer report as of December 31, 2024, and end of fiscal year 2024 financial report.
Second. Yes. Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Mononey.
Yes.
Yeah. Council President Shay.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on to our first presentation of the evening, item number six. This is where I'd like, love to invite our fire chief, Greg Beaver. We have some awards that will be presented by him to his team.
I'll tell them here, so everybody can see.
We love that.
So every year, every quarter, our officers vote on firefighter of the quarter. And then at our Christmas party, we, everybody but me, I don't ever get a vote except for a token sometimes. That everybody gets a vote on firefighter of the year. The first one would be that's a pretty hard one, that everybody's won the award over and over again. We usually don't let officers per take, but we're kind of, you know, we decided to let them participate. And so Anton, he's a lieutenant, been here for, for over 10 years, 10, these are all for 24, so he got firefighter of the year. And my neighbor, and he's been bugging me his whole life to be the
Afraid.
And so when he turned 18, he joined.
Wow.
And, yeah. So you get a picture of you together? And if I could clone him, I would do that. And so firefighter of the year, and also, he's been here 10 years. It'll be, well, not 11, what was your birthday? So in April, it'll be 11 years, so he has 10 years. And somewhere, I'll get you, I have a little pen, too, that has, that it can wear on his uniform, and say, for 10 years. I'll get it. And then Casey Marcraft, he's got five years of service. Was on the department when I joined for quite a while, and I could clone him too. Maybe his little brother might want to, I don't know how it feels, but I think he's actually bigger. But, yeah, thanks, Casey.
Thank you, chief, and thank you to all of our firefighters for your service, and congratulations on your awards for this evening. We're gonna move on to item number seven. This is our public hearing. Public hearing to consider a city-initiated text amendment to Bellevue City Code Chapters 10-7, the Business District, and 10-24 Plan Unit Developments, PUDs, to permit multiple family dwellings through plan unit development applications, and to reduce the minimum lot size required to submit a plan unit development application. I'll have Brian Parker, our community development director, kind of lead us a little bit in tonight's public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Dorgani, Brian Parker, community development director. This item was urgently on the January 14 council agenda, it was continued to this as a public jury, because I was out sick. But I'm feeling much better now, so here we are. This application is city-initiated, so I was the one brought it forward. It got through planning and zoning with unanimous recommendation of approval. The need of this is really a baby step for our longer conversation, or in a bit more generally. It would allow applicants to bring forward plan year development applications for multifamily housing in the business zone, and reduces the minimum development area for plan year developments in all zones, except for the general residential transitional zones, from one acre to a half acre. In those two zones, it will still be an acre minimum size for that development area. Like I said, this is, this is not entitling anything by right, this is very specifically still requiring an applicant to bring forward a complete application for conditionally used permit, plan year development, design review. And so, and appropriate if they're doing a concrete in class. So in order to determine that an application is appropriate and may proceed with construction, you all, as a council, have to find affirmatively that it meets all the criteria that is included in your staff report on this application, for all those applications. Specifically, applies with comprehensive plan, adequate public infrastructure available to the site, or the ability for a developer to provide improvements of infrastructure to adequately serve the development. That they will be compatible with neighbors. They will not generate noise, smoke, beams, traffic, volume, reasonable proportions, et cetera. So any questions?
I'm opposed to ask council, you for this public hearing tonight, if you'd like to have a bit of a table discussion first, and then open it up for public comment? Or would you like to help to public comment first?
I think it would be helpful for us to be able to ask questions of Brian before we go to public hearing.
Sounds great. So open up the table for discussion.
Oh, I'm checking, we will start. I would, I would like to bring the council and to the mayor that these amendments are, again, premature. We don't, we cannot prioritize the time and resources to opening up things for multi-building development, when we have such a litany of other things, where the residents have established some priorities that we are struggling to provide. I so I don't even know how this keeps coming out, but we have comments from from meetings early in 2024, from meetings in July, from public comment in July, from public comment October, and even November, saying that people are unhappy with the way Main Street's being managed. I brought up the issue of Shantrell earlier, and I believe that there is procedural thing that could probably be addressed by ordinance, and we're not seeing the ordinances, we're not seeing a focus on code enforcement and things like that, that prioritize the residents and resident needs over those of catchment.
Mayor Dorgani, Councilmember Reed, there a question in that, if you'd like?
No, I'm just trying to, because I, this, now, you know, the option now is to start bombarding, bombarding me with new questions, and I think you've done a tremendous job on this, and I think that there is a place for this further down the line. But until we've established the fundamentals, until we've listened to the many, many voices that have submitted comments in your surveys, and my surveys, in other public comment. You know, you're moving too fast, you're not looking at the long-term problems that your amendments, things about water, things about Chapter 7. All of this has been, and we have not had time to prioritize the residents, and what, what your office, or what your department, I believe, should be doing to achieve those goals that the residents have asked to have achieved well before we began creating multi-unit opportunities on Main Street, and thus creating work in your department, I think you should be 100% committed to the innovation of, and achieving the goals that, that the community has asked us to focus on.
Can I ask a few questions?
Good.
Great. Um, so, wondering about the density bonuses, right? Great. Um, so wondering about the density bonuses, right? And, you know, it says, I'm sorry, it's page 11. The standard in, standards and criteria is 24, 10-24-4. And it's page 11. Yeah. So, um, and it's B, and it goes under the density bonuses. So the one thing that I am just concerned about is that as a broad term, the provision of community housing above that which then required. Um, so that the specifics of it, and I feel like moving forward without with it just being broad from what I'm understanding. So the PUD process, Brian, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this. So if we approve this, it can go then to planning and zoning and they can just move forward before council sees it? Or does it still have to go through the process of P and Z and then to us? If somebody submits per this criteria?
If an application is submitted, uh, it is, uh, first submitted to me. I transmit it for agency comment, notify the neighbors with their feedbacks, the newspaper, the site posting, all those requirements. Um, and then I prepare a staff report for a planning and zoning commission. Uh, they have a public hearing. Uh, they are the deciding body on the desired view and initial use permits, uh, portions of the application. Uh, so they, and then you guys are the deciding body on the, uh, plan new development application.
Got it. Okay. And then I know the housing part is, you know, we talked about, oh, this is going to be down the road, but I am just wondering if we open, like, we need housing, uh, you know, community housing, and when you say community housing, that doesn't really necessarily say developer, your units have to be within the 30 to 60% AMI. You know, it's not specific. So I'm wondering if we go forward and approve something like this, it's just like a broad term that's not necessarily, that doesn't designate community housing, saying community housing.
The, those portion of the, the ordinance is existing, it is already on the books.
Right.
The way that I worded the, uh, allowance for multifamily housing, it did not include a specific density requirement or minimum lot size or anything like that. Uh, so there's really no way of accessing the density bonuses, does that make sense? Um, but because it is still applicable to other developments in, in general, it's definitely something like that. So for tonight's purposes, it's really not.
So if we move forward with this and somebody came to you and said, I want 10% for the provision of community housing, but we don't have?
10% overall. Because there's not a set maximum density or lot size or whatever. Way of establishing what the maximum density will be.
Okay. And then just another question about, um, if you don't mind, um, is when we talk about yeah, densities and uses on, there's no page number, but if I go back and it's 65 in my pocket, but it's underneath planning unit development approval criteria. But it's talking about will not generate vehicle or traffic to cause undue congestion in public street network within, within or outside the PUD. But then I was seeing in here with any multifamily unit, it's two car, two spaces per unit, which I'd like, so just long-term thinking. Um, if we don't start requiring people to use public transportation and change payers and how we build, we're going to be living in a carbon box here pretty quickly. So, um, is there reason behind that? Is that what P and Z, I think that that's what they came up with? And that's why that was in here or?
Again, this is not a, that's an already existing code requirement.
Okay. Okay.
Keep those comments in mind, you're running forward on the bigger conversation.
Okay. I guess, yeah, I guess I'm more concerned a little bit, like we need housing, we need to move forward. Everything else, the larger scope looks great to me, but it makes me nervous approving something when we, it's very, it's undefined, undefined. It's not very specific on what we need. It's just like, we could just open up the floodgates and then there won't be any turning back. So.
The, the process from here is very deliberate and pretty strenuous to get through as far as meeting all the criteria for the condition is permitted by the development and desire of you. And I, I do agree that it is, um, a little hazy at this point, but this, like I said, is really a baby step in this allowance and that you guys can consider individual projects on a case by case basis as they come.
Is it fair to ask, what is the desired outcome and how does that outcome impact water, traffic, code enforcement, safety services, and the existing housing affordability in the, in the region? As we've seen density impacting, um, homeowners insurance and things like that. When we look at this, what's the desired outcome and, and what studies do we have? And, and I understand what you're saying about baby stuff because I recognize it in that. And that's where I think it belongs as part of a bigger project. So I share Jessica's comments and how we establish what we're trying to accomplish and how this, I think, cool, things like we're putting the, the cart before the horse.
Uh, as far as the desired outcome, uh, I would refer back to the comprehensive plan that was adopted. And, uh, in your staff report, again, there's, uh, select excerpts from that.
And I saw, so there's numbers in there, is that right? Like a hundred units with this much change in density, the specifics, right, of the, of the development. Now, I understand when you picked them out, and I thought you did a beautiful job of doing it, but I'm saying.
I, I'd like Brian to finish this.
Sorry, sorry.
Uh, so the end goal is to implement the comprehensive plan as adopted. And like I said, I believe there is evidence in the comprehensive plan, uh, that supports this amendment and maybe more uh, in the larger, if the seven.
So like I've heard a couple of questions within your question, the first one being, what is the desired outcome? And then the second one had to do with services. Can you rephrase that again?
Oh yeah, I was saying, what is the desired outcome and how are the impact to water, traffic, code enforcement, existing housing affordability? Those, all those things, how are they assessed and evaluating that desired outcome?
I might jump in. I think they're assessed on a case by case basis. So when somebody comes in with this project, they have to satisfy all those conditions, which one of them is that they don't produce excess traffic, noise, pollution, fire. Uh, we can serve it with the city. So it really gives, uh, a lot of flexibility for the city. If they do see a project that they like, it's not a guarantee that they, they're going to get this because they have assessed by all this stuff. And so those things that you just brought forward are the things that you would be considering when you assess the particular project that comes before you.
And so, okay. And so there's a cap then, is what you're saying.
Well, the cap is the condition that they have to, to meet to, to get approval.
Okay. So I guess I'm saying, where are the, how will we be measuring that?
Well, I guess you would, you would have to require the applicant to carry the burden of, of proving to you that, that they meet your concerns.
This was another item that I was hoping to present to you all, uh, the last council meeting. Responsibilities, I'll kind of jump into this a little bit. Uh, when you guys get a site-specific land use application, meaning it is judging the development proposal for a given piece of property, uh, you guys are no longer acting as elected representatives of the community, you are judges. You take off the politician hat, you put on a robe and a wig. Really good. Uh, and you review the application materials and all public comment and all the testimony you've received, the whole body of evidence of that application and go through the criteria of approval for whichever given application it is, and you determine as a judge that it does or does not meet all of those criteria. And so to get to specifics of flood trap or impacts are going to be like sewer capacity for this site. That is generally on the birth, that the developer to approve that those, that infrastructure exists to serve it. And then the impacts can be mitigated.
And as I understand the process, um, it, it, it will go through the planning and zoning process first and planning and zoning will review it, make sure that it meets all the criteria. You can't just pick and choose which criteria. It, it has to meet all of the criteria in, in the PUD, the design review and, I can see the other one. Conditional use permit. And so, um, planning and zoning will recommend on those. And then it comes up to city council where city council will take P and Z's recommendation and they will cross-check and go through the exact same criteria that P and Z reviewed in, in making their recommendations. So it's, it's, it's a cumbersome process, um, but it's, but it's in place to, to make sure that the city gets the product that they want.
Speaking of, uh, modified Bellevue City Code section, this is under the proposed amendment. Um, 10-7-4 to include multiple family dwellings, including townhomes and condominiums as part of the mixed-use development and approves through a planning unit development application. So, um, in the language, when you say makes, when you're saying mixed use, is that specific? That's mixed use with commercial? That's lower.
Yes. So.
I just want to.
There is specific standards in the grass ordinance.
Three.
Eight, three, yeah. Uh, for mixed use developments, uh, that requires work space to be, uh, right at primary street level. Um, and then either with residential uses above or it could be behind in the case of a single story development.
Okay, behind?
Yeah. So like if you had a large, generally square parcel, you could have
Okay.
Commercial up here and then.
Okay. Okay.
It has to be 50%.
Yeah, at least 50% of the ground floor.
Okay. Yeah.
And was there, but in, because it's an amendment as part of the definition, did you not, uh, appropriate to have a definition of what mixed use? Was that, I mean, that would seem appropriate to have it in there?
I opted against it in this app, or this, uh, ordinance, uh, simply because the, uh, requirements of this, uh, 10-7-5E are very specific as far as commercial, residential, uh, I think if we want to get more flexible in the larger business standards, definition may be appropriate.
So to clarify, your opinion is that that line, I think E is, is funny definition enough for use within the S and M.
A couple of questions, and they have some later here, I guess, but, uh, so you said that the CUP would be heard by the planning and zoning commission and they would make a recommendation on that?
They are the deciding body on the conditions for, and it's designed to.
Okay. So those, it could only be reviewed by the council if they were, you know, the grants. And so our review would be just, it would be, but the council's review, I shouldn't say, not to personize it, but, um, um, okay. And, and then, um, we're only talking about a mix as I read it of commercial and residential. Someone could say, well, I want to put a little bit of a, um, retail plumbing operation that maybe sells a little plumbing, but also does, you know, their thing out in the community for plumbing repair. Kind of a light, more of a light industrial type of use.
Uh, that would it's hard, like equipment storage and things like that, that would probably not meet the commercial standard in the business.
Okay. I mean, I could see maybe some, you know, commercial, I think refers to commercial space and, and that could be a fairly broad term that would be broadly interpreted.
Yeah, it would also fall back on the permit, initially uses in the business zone.
Which we haven't fully updated yet.
Correct.
And maybe kind of related to that, looking at the map that's on the, the second page of the material. I didn't get a chance to maybe look at that map relative to the topography to see. You know, my sense of the commercial is that it would kind of end on the west side of highway 75 with the alley. Uh, that, that might not be, you know, in some areas of the north, there really isn't an alley in the same way that you have in this flat, flat town site. I mean, in other areas, that might not be as much of an issue as it would be, say, west of here, for example. Um, and so I don't know whether that is, it's not really on the agenda tonight, but if that's ever been contemplated by the city to maybe amend that zone so that it reflects a little more accurately what would be appropriately, in my opinion, commercial and what wouldn't be. Now there was a reference to floodplain. Um, so that may be a question sort of outside the scope tonight, but this, this map structure is a little problematic in the, in that regard. We might be allowing things that are below the bench that wouldn't, that are zone business, but wouldn't be appropriately.
Correct. And that, I do, those are all very good comments, I think, for the, uh, the larger, the business overview that we're undergoing currently. And I will say that, uh, as you are receiving individual applications, if it is in the floodplain or if it is inappropriate, ecological, something for it or reasons. Anyway, you may, uh, need to find, but it's not, uh, consistent with one of the many criteria that they have.
Yeah, I can appreciate that there might be a criteria to attach your app to. Thank you. That's all I have at the moment.
I want your time devoted to, uh, if this were to become a reality.
If I scan a brutal, um, I didn't prepare a specific, uh, map for you guys on this topic, but I did run the quick GIS search. Uh, I think there's a grand total of five developable properties of a half an acre or larger, uh, within the business zone. One of them is here tonight and has been in contact with me, but I don't, I don't expect, uh, people stampeding the door.
Well, I didn't even need stampeding the door, but let's say you had proposals for all five lots or for each, each endeavor. What is your time commitment?
Um, can I just ask real quick how that's relevant?
Uh, because I think when you open a floodgate or an opportunity like this, it means that that time isn't be, isn't going to be spent on creating and enforcing, standardizing, enforcing Bellevue codes. That it's not going to be spent on trying to repair, what is a dis, dis-repair, dis-rebual, almost at this point, area around the elementary school. There are a lot of things that I think our community planning department should be focused on. And this becomes a considerable use of time, um, between P and Z and between the work that you do to create the permitting between the council. We're talking about this now. And right now we have, we know that the residents don't want a fifth gas station on Main Street, but we have no way to stop it. So I would have loved to have had this opportunity to say, hey, let's stop. Let's create an ordinance or a tax amendment that doesn't like gas stations on, so a time spent from the.
So I think, you know, when you're, when you're looking at a department head's time and his allocation, his, his breadth of work he will be taking on in a fiscal year, um, is diversified. And I think it is up to our department head's, uh, ability and skill to be able to divide their time to what's important and what's strategically set forward. Um, within their work plan and then the mayor's work plan and the council's work plan of how we're dividing our time. So while I understand the question, I, I don't agree with the appropriateness of that question at this time, um, for Brian to respond to.
So Brian, um, help me understand what criteria we would be looking at in order to, uh, move forward or not with the tax amendment. I'm assuming one of those is criteria, uh, is, uh, compliance with the, the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. So the tax amendment is less suggestion, you find that it's compliant with comprehensive plan and that it is of public interest.
Thank you.
Unless the council disagrees, I feel like right now is a good time. I'd like to open it up for public comment. Um, and allow those that are in city hall and on Zoom, um, to provide public comment on this hearing. Um, and allow those that are in city hall and on Zoom, um, to provide public comment on this hearing. Um, when we're going through public comment, if you're in city hall, please raise your hand. I'll call on you. And if you will, please provide your full name and address. Um, and on Zoom, raise your hand and I will, um, individually call on you and get to you, um, to provide public comment as well. So at this time I will go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Go ahead, please. My name is Jolyon Sari. I'm a local architect in Bellevue and land planner. Um, I live at thirty Y drive to South Town in Griffin Ranch. Uh, my comments come from my twenty eight years of living in the valley and I recognize some familiar faces that are sitting at the table in a voting capacity tonight. I hope in some regards, my presence, uh, and relative to this amendment, it has a lot to do with an opportunity that I have as an architect and that the, uh, presence of me being here, I hope brings comfort to a variety of people. I think I have, um, respect and earned that in many people's eyes in our greater community here. I'm a south by resident. I live just south of town. My office is in town. And I consider this my town relative to the towns of the valley, even though I own from Denver, I'm located with Summit with all of us. I see that as a children area, but that's our, our community. And the history here is I've known Diane Shea along in her capacity when you were in planning department here. And over those years, I came maybe two times with different developers, uh, many months ago. Could be seven years ago, ten, twelve years ago, and it had to do exactly this topic. Nothing's happened in Bellevue, right? Uh, sorry, that doesn't mean that everything hasn't happened. But I believe the planning zoning commission, I believe the city council here has a duty to look at the past, learn from it, deal with the present, like Suzanne's talking about issues, all right? And to plan for and promote our future, all right? In this case, um, Jeff Swanson, who I'm with here is a developer that before me this year, um, there was dialogue that was had and this occurred after Diane Shea's time because I came in front of her with developers going, wow, the Bellevue ordinance is missing a couple of words to make it friendlier to do a mixed use project, living and commercial. And if you're in that industry of development, you can look at Haley, you can look at Ketchum, look at other places. The cost of land, what you need to build on the land, what the community is willing to pay, rent or ownership, what the profit is generated on that land and you find that commercial alone doesn't cut it, all right? And so you've got to add another component to it and therefore residential is the smart, in my opinion, answer. And that's where the word mixed use comes into play. And so once one adds both, uh, to them, and when the city of Bellevue has a challenge of the size of the parcel requirement, that's a huge limitation for starters. I personally wanted to invest in a piece of land south of, of the office here, down by the old restoration building. And it was too large a parcel for me to financially tie it up with an ordinance that is unknown of how you guys would critique it. It was too big of a gamble, all right? By making this text amendment that came from, um, Jeff in the previous year, um, stirring the pot and saying, I'm a smaller piece of property, all right? How could we, with the current rules, make it somewhat more favorable for growth in our town? You all said in a good way, uh, and I applauded, let's table this towards the end of the last year, all right? Let's wait till our new administrator in the planning, uh, zoning department comes to the table. You did that and therefore probably Jeff, the developer gentleman here, my, um, I'm a customer to him, he's my client. Uh, I was like, ah, what's this going to take? And we're like, hey, let's wait and see what Brian comes up with. I'm applauding Brian I have previously publicly, I'm saying it again. I would have never come up with, if I was in his position, the brilliance of the simple P U D, all right? And so the half acre and the P U D is what I really think this is about, right? We covered tonight what the P U D criteria would come back to you, how in theory, and this is the important part, if the merits of the proposal presented to you don't pass the muster, then you must deny it, right? I don't want to make the OJ Simpson, you know, if the God doesn't fit, but the point is it's up to you, all right? Therefore, the challenge, which is where the comfort is, that the development team that comes in front of you, who's attending every one of your planning sessions for the upcoming business district, because I'm not going anywhere, this is my community. I applaud you for the speed and desire to expedite that process for the whole overview. But that takes time. I had tried to do it for a decade, all right? I don't know if it was accurate, exactly.
Yeah.
So this idea that you all conspired, you go, you know what? Simple text amendment, size and P U D, the P U D was the winner, all right? It allows the developer to feel comfortable to come to the table and go, A, they are considering it open to growth in a mixed use capacity. But you all have the control, the strength, all right, to say if it doesn't meet the muster, deny it, all right? Therefore, the comfort is, I look forward to the challenge of designing a building that we get hopefully a unanimous approval of saying it's our burden to make your job easy, to make our town beautiful and grow and give it that mixed use building and have some vitality. And believe me, the design concept, by coming to all your meetings and paying attention to where you're going on the future business plan, I want to be the legacy project and go on, yeah, that's what we're talking about, a project like that. Or if I hear you at your meetings and discussions deviating over here as a preference, I believe me, we're going to try to incorporate that in again, so I can earn that look of a signal star, pride and stamp and approval and on we go. Talked too long? Thank you for the passion, opportunity to share, but I hope us, this team brings comfort to you.
Thank you, John.
Good job.
Any other public comment in city hall?
Do I need to preface who I am?
Yes.
Um, I'm the assistant fire chief. My name is Trent Schumaker. I'm also happen to be the husband of the treasurer. So I'm going to try not to involve my, my, this comes from my wife and I, so we made a trip to Bio Fallsboro wedding on Friday. And this was a topic of conversation that we had in the car on the way home. And she.
Were reading, I was reading.
Pulled up, so, and for me personally, I am a fourth generation native to the city of Bellevue, for those that don't know, so I've been here a day or two. About the only guy in the room that has been here longer is probably that man right there. So I'm very vested, this is my home, this has been my home for a long, long time. I'm not planning on going anywhere. And it's really hard for me personally to watch folks come. I, I've been a part of the fire department for thirty years and I've been a part of these meetings and I've watched people come in here with their own agenda and do things to this city that are just atrocious. I've watched it forever. And then the, the icing on the cake for that is then they decide I got to move away. So they leave all that stuff for me to be in, because I've been here and I'm not going anywhere. So it's personal for me. But in the reading of the, especially the comprehensive plan that I know Miss Shea put a lot of time into, because I was here for that as well. And what it says that we need to grow our city in a responsible way. We've got a brand new development director that's hitting it out of the park, Brian. He's got a lot of knowledge, he's got a lot of innovative ideas, he's got a lot of things. And I think he's going to build, if he doesn't already have it, because I don't know a ton about it, a, a design review committee or the, the, the P and Z committee that will not allow this to be a detriment to the city. I understand concerns like five gas stations on Main Street. Let's let competition be what competition is. Let's let one of them put the other one out of business if one of them doesn't belong there. If they're all thriving and they're all in business and they're doing well, then they must need to be there. You know, so I am very much in favor of moving forward. And the best part about this from me is that what Mr. Parker said, it's a baby step. This is not opening a floodgate. There's five parcels. There was a whole bunch of information that I can't remember now about how much commercial land there is on Main Street, how much, you know, what we can do with this, what we can do with that, breaking it down this way, breaking, there is more stuff there than ten people can think about. And so I think that, you know, we're moving forward slowly, but we're moving forward. I've watched the city just stagnate. I mean, COVID didn't do us any favors, of course, but the city, the city just, I know that there's problems that need to be addressed with code enforcement. I've been screaming about it forever, so is the chief, but those kind, there's got to be a way to work with that, to work those code enforcement problems in. Because nobody wants to be the code enforcement guy that goes and tells your neighbor, hey, just stop doing that, can't do that anymore. Nobody wants to be that guy, I get it. Curtis doesn't want to be that guy, whoever you hire doesn't even want to be that guy. So, but it's a necessary function of the city, you know, for the city. And with guys like you, and I apologize, I don't remember your name, because what about that wasn't like the best thing you've ever heard? That's why I didn't raise my hand first, because I wanted to see what everybody else, what somebody else had to say. You've got people here that care about this city and want to see it succeed and want to see it be better. And not just a dumping ground for the, the housing crisis that we have in the Wood River Valley. You know, that's, I don't want that either, but I want to have, you know, responsible growth. We need responsible growth. I need more people in this town to be on my fire department. And I'm, they're not knocking the door down. So I, I need young people, I need people that want to be here, that want to be a part of this community. Because sometimes I don't know if there are people here that want to be part of this community, because I sure don't know them sometimes. I know you guys do because you give your time. I've been giving my time for thirty years to this town. So I think that this is a, this is something that needs to happen and go forward. But I think that the oversight here is awesome, that you guys realize that we need to move forward, but we got problems, we got to deal.
Thank you so much for your comment, Trent. Do you want to acknowledge as well that we've received two public comments, um, via email that council received? One from the Blaine County Housing Authority and the other one from Dana, um, I apologize, uh, Brazelton, Brazelton, topple. Um, those comments were received via email today and presented to city council, um, to read before tonight's meeting. So thank you to both of those, that entity and that individual for submitting your public comment. Would anyone like me to read any of the comment aloud or if you have time to review the comment?
You could paraphrase.
I'm happy to read, um, Dana's. And then I think the house has already been earlier, so I'm going to go ahead and read Dana's public comment, um, for the record, just for everyone on council. Um, it says, according to staff report, T A dash twenty four dash zero two dash P U D minimum size, the approval of the proposed text amendment would not allow the by right development of multifamily housing. All proposals for multifamily housing would be subject to review for compliance with Bellevue's design review, conditional use permit and planning unit development approval criteria. One of the conditional use permit criteria specifies will not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. In addition, the planned use development criteria specifies that public services, facilities and utilities are adequate to serve the proposed P U D and anticipated development within the appropriate service areas. Bellevue sewer and water, I'm sorry, Bellevue sewer and drinking water resources are already either broken or in limited capacity with aging infrastructure. The city is struggling with how to pay for the necessary repairs and upgrades already needed to accommodate the people living here currently. According to the twenty twenty impact fee study paid for by the city, developer impact, impact fees should not contain funding to support major water and sewer projects because these costs are routinely funded by monthly service charges by ratepayers assessed as water and sewer connection fees. Therefore, doesn't any new development pass the cost of new people and businesses to all ratepayers in the city? Any new connection fees would not generate enough to pay for what's already needed to be done, let alone expansion needed. Why would the city of Bellevue initiate this text change if its own existing criteria cannot be met by any new development contemplated? How does the city plan to pay for what will be needed to accommodate? Sorry, I think our. I apologize, so it's been a little bit longer. Um, how does the city plan to pay for what will be needed to accommodate even more people and businesses? Plan development is inevitable and in the future will be positive for this community, but what is the plan? Is there a plan? There's a reference on the website to a comprehensive plan, but it is not on the website for residences to read. Um, most of the council, the new council and mayor ran on platforms to help fix longstanding problems in Bellevue sewer, water and roads and to develop a real community here. Shouldn't we focus on fixing these longstanding problems before we spend resources contemplating the future? Thank you, Dana, for your comments. I apologize for messing it up there at the end, but we got through it.
I have additional comments, which you guys have, have read before.
Let me go ahead and close up public comment first. So I don't see any other hands on Zoom and I don't, if there's no other hands or people would like to speak in city hall, um, then I will go ahead and close public comment at this time and open it back up, um, city council for a little bit more discussion, it feels like.
Well, I didn't know we had, uh, these are just comments from the previous hearings, but are on the same topic about putting this type of ordinance or something first. I didn't know if you guys are all still content with your recollections. There's about sixty different, um, comments, you know, keep Bellevue, keep Bellevue, don't increase the density of zoning in Bellevue. We have one artery, we're at a pivotal tipping point, concern about rezoning plans, so things that have been submitted before.
And I think those were relevant to, yeah, zoning discussion.
Yeah, so I just wanted to remind you that there are already over sixty comments that pertain to this topic.
They pertain to the business zone topic.
Yeah.
The zoning amendment, yeah, okay, so. No, and that's okay. I just want to make sure that we still are delineating between that this is a P U D hearing and, um, topics that are being referenced while they are referencing Main Street, that's a zoning change. And we're looking at the, the P U D tonight.
Well, I appreciate that, but I'm also trying to make the point of that, that what I've been saying is that I'm not sure how we're prioritizing this above other things and that this is generally the gist of these comments. What about all this other stuff that needs to be done? And let's have a plan, let's have another approach. I just wanted to stipulate that.
And I, 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 I think that I, I really do appreciate how, um, the public comment from Trent Schumaker presented itself of, um, an understanding of, I think there's a general acknowledgement from this council, um, that there's still a lot of foundational work to be done on services, um, and improving services and uh, communication and, and kind of all the things we've continued to touch on. While focusing on that, I think there's also, uh, an openness from aspects of our community, uh, people wanting to come into the community, um, to have creative projects that would allow us to look at how to be thoughtfully move forward while we still are continuing to work on foundational issues that will continue present themselves as we're working through them. So, um, I appreciate all the comments and I think what I'm hearing from council tonight is, you know, trying to not look at those things exclusively and kind of discuss the PD in context of understanding that there still are foundational problems to solve for the community. Sean, is there anything that you want to kind of contribute to or tie into to next discussion?
Yeah, no, I'm having fun listening, everybody. Uh, it's a good time to listen, you know, and, uh, everybody's got a lot of good stuff to talk about. But you know, we, I'm taking it all in and, you know, and I've been around the block a few, few times. And, uh, and it's, it's okay. I'm just going to sit here and listen.
Thank you.
I do have a public comment to read into the record. From, uh, from me.
What, from you, Suzanne, as an individual?
As a resident.
Resident, just for clarification, is that?
Well, it's your comment, your city council.
Okay, okay, and just this way it can be in that. No, I wrote it down.
No, I didn't know if you, like you didn't read it during public.
You didn't read it during public comment, do I need to, it basically?
Yeah, it's not really a closed public comment.
Um, you gotta open it back up and do that or you close it and you submit it. Like, I'm sorry, I'm not trying.
That's fair. How you'd like to proceed with it?
I guess you could open back up the public comment and or, I mean, you could just say your comments.
As, as a, as a council member.
During deliberation.
During deliberation, yeah.
Okay.
That feels, if that's okay with you, I prefer you to just.
Cause you're not, you're a council.
You're a council member making a, making a statement.
Play a different role.
Sorry.
Okay, you're ready?
Agreed?
Yeah, agreed.
Okay.
Those were, okay. Uh, as documented multiple times over the course of the past. Uh, as documented multiple times over the course of the past year, residents have asked to be served not by new private development, but rather by planning that enables small actionable projects that help Main Street stay true to itself by adding some diversity of restaurants, a more vibrant small business core and better fundamentals like regular maintenance and streetlights and sidewalks with character for style and safety. There's been more public comment about Main Street development solicited in the last year than any other topic in Bellevue. With tonight being at least the fourth public hearing since early twenty twenty-four on the topic of changing ordinances to permit currently prohibited development types or permitting unwanted development on Main Street such as gas stations. It is time for the leadership of Bellevue to focus on the basics and to ensure that Bellevue residents are always the first to benefit equally from decisions made on their behalf. There simply is no evidence that shows that prioritizing multi-unit dwellings on Main Street serves all of our residents better than ordinances and projects that standardize and enforce Bellevue codes, start improving and cleaning up our neighborhoods by paving our alleys, improve safety and establish a high standard of maintenance around the elementary school, prevent more gas stations on Main Street, prevent harming existing residents by taking their water and giving it to new developments on Main Street as happened in Chantrelle, create new building requirements that prepare our community for gray water systems in the future, establish planning methodologies to properly evaluate the cost of new development and density on the affordability of existing housing and the sustainability of our essential assets like water and open space. This ordinance is inappropriate in the face of the many outstanding needs in our community. Mr. Parker is a very capable, knowledgeable leader for the Community Development Department, and we should be applying one hundred percent of his talents, time and effort to pursuing the innovation and achievements that our community has consistently communicated that it wants, rather than for forcing him to devise ways that Bellevue can be used to service Ketchum community housing initiatives. One of the biggest concerns of residents in Bellevue is the protection and sustainable use of our water as well as concerns about emergency preparedness, existing housing insecurity, open space and the timely, reliable, affordable and safe delivery of basic services to our community. I would hope we would never place the wants of Ketchum special interests, real estate businesses and developers above the wants of Bellevue residents, especially when the current state of Ketchum speaks volumes about the recklessness with, with density profiteers have descended upon and changed that once romantic special town.
And, yeah, thank you. I just want to clarify there, just to take it back to what Brian said. This is a text amendment being initiated from this Bellevue, the city of Bellevue, for the city of Bellevue. For development in Bellevue, residents of Bellevue. So please, please know and understand that this is not coming from an outside agency. This isn't coming from Ketchum coming down. This is a Bellevue-centric, Bellevue-initiated text amended through our P and Z and our department. So while I, I, I understand some of the statements in there, I think they can be a little bit. It can misconstrue the initiation of this text amendment and kind of skew the public opinion of, of where it originated from. And I just want to make sure that's very clear that this is coming from Bellevue through our Community Development Department initiated. And not, you know, controlled or adjusted by anyone outside of the city. So just.
Mayor, hey, Mayor.
Yeah.
This is Sean. I want something to say now. The city is a lot of problems and, you know, we know that. We know we have a lot to deal with. We're just talking about PODs, Main Street. You know, we know that there's problems. But you know what? We have to deal with them. But we also have to deal with Main Street and the PODs, you know? And you, you, you're, you're making it sound like you're, you know, you can't do anything. We, we, we know and Bellevue that we're no longer, you know, we, we don't have to deal with Ketchum. Or some, somebody that comes down from Ketchum. But you know, we have to deal with Bellevue. And if things important to, to do what we're doing, you know, talking about the PODs and, and Main Street, it's important. Is that the only thing we're talking about? It's the part we're talking about now. So, so I'm, I'm really happy with how things are going. And I think that we keep going and we're gonna be okay.
Thank you, Sean. Yes.
So kind of on, on the broader scale, you know, a one acre to one half acre change doesn't strike me as unreasonable. I mean, one acre is pretty big for, honestly, for a, a, a urban PUD area. Maybe there's some things about, you know, streets and crossing streets and alleys and those kinds of things that we need a little attention, but that, that doesn't really give me too much heartburn. And nor really does a mixed use component to have, as long as, you know, it's pretty well defined. Commercial and this is about residential and you don't let other kinds of things where the market might be a little stronger kind of sneak in on you and become part of a, a commercial use. And, and so, you know, there's kind of mixed uses that exist on Main Street today. And, and I think that, you know, that, that can be managed through the right kind of criteria. And I think the PUD is the appropriate process where really, as I more generally understand PODs, maybe not so much about understanding Bellevue's code, but in general understand PODs, there's a great deal of discretion that is allowed to the decision makers in a PUD that, so people don't come in and say, well, as of right, I'm entitled to X. And then the cap, the city is on the defensive about saying, well, we disagree and, and you're kind of, you know, that creates a conflict at the beginning, that there's a great deal of discretion that's allowed in a PUD. And so those two concepts, I guess in general, don't really bother me too much that are incorporated into the code. But I do have some concerns about the code itself. And maybe I'll just kind of walk through those a little bit. And so and that maybe starts from, you have page one of Bellevue City Ordinance twenty twenty-five. And I think, and, and one thing that I have found helpful over time in order to do this kind of review is to have line numbering in the left hand.
You used to pick my staff. I knew that was kind of.
Just, just because that's been easier for me to advise, you know, or tell the council, okay, in line twelve, this is where I'm speaking. So that's just a kind of a helpful thing for, and helpful to the public, honestly. But in, in the second from the top in the, in the heading there, it refers to the GR and T zones. I, I think it should refer to all the zones where this is being included, not the zones where this is being accepted. So that people know, okay, this is going into this zone. And maybe again, that's a little bit of my not full understanding of all the zones that exist in, in the city to deal with. But I, I think that, that where this would apply is important to spell out as opposed to where it would not apply.
Can I, did Brian, do you have any response to that?
That is a valid point. I just will add that Rick reviewed the ordinance and ordinance summary and felt comfortable with the language I've written, but there's always room for.
And, and that's, that may be in the scheme of things is a minor comment, but I didn't make a notation of that and kind of covered it a couple of places. Then on the second page, you know, where it refers to conditional users, this becomes a conditional use. That, that maybe is okay. You know, these other, these other conditional uses just refer to public facilities or, or parking lots or churches or and, and then those are defined. And I think that's actually the, probably the better way to do it is just to say mixed, you, mixed use development and then later in the definitions define mixed use development. Maybe helps to resolve some concerns about what exactly that means. So again, this is my personal opinion about how that would be handled is it just says mixed use development is a condition of use and that's defined. I know you kind of talked a little bit about, well, we chose not to define it, but I think there's some merit in considering that. And then on the, on page three, where then if it talks, we're in the section where it says dimensional bulk and building coverage standards and requirements. And then it lists these various requirements and those don't seem to me to be dimensional bulk or building coverage requirements. Really, they seem to kind of define what a mixed use development is. And then are, and are actually criteria for what a mixed use development is. And it says, you know, they'll be allowed if you meet the following criteria. There should be something in there, you know, if approved as a PUD, kind of note the other criteria that would be appropriate in, for review, so that someone doesn't just think, oh, they're allowed if I meet these three criteria and you're on your way. But it, it's clear that there's more criteria to be satisfied there. And so I, I think that maybe could create a little bit of a misnomer on an applicant's part as to what's allowed and what's required. And so that that would be either moved to a conditions section or would be moved to a PUD criteria or something and not in the location that it's, that's placed here. And then a little notation about where mixed use development might go into the definitions. And then finally, if there are particular criteria that might apply, and these are either listed as conditions of those that are spelled out below and they're moved to another location or they're incorporated in some way, the condition of criteria. So those are very specific kinds of things I appreciate. And, but they are kind of concerns to me about how this might evolve and, and that it's you know, with the, the concept, I don't really think that, I, I think has merit and could go forward. But some attention still to how it's spelled out in the code and what else is required and how someone might get through the process. Use a little attention. So that, those are a few of my thoughts. Thank you.
I think so. I appreciate, because that's kind of where I was moving with thinking about the definitions and being a little more clear. Obviously, Tom has a breadth of knowledge as well with his position that he's helped in the community and I respect that. And, and I see that where it seems like it's not in the right place, it's appropriate as well. But in, in essence, I am I don't see any issues with the, this text amendment. I think it is in line with what we should be doing as community leaders. It doesn't mean tomorrow an application comes in and we just approve it. It means that process needs to be followed. And now we have upon approving something, and I'm not saying just this, but upon approving something, we'll have something to guide with versus not. And so we'll have a say, like you mentioned, and I think that that's important for us moving forward. And whether we have water to it or the facilities, nobody's saying that tonight. We're just saying that these text amendments can help us better serve our community moving into the future.
Mayor.
I would just like to add respectfully, Suzanne, disagreeing with it being a rush. I feel like, I mean, as Jolyon referred to, I think I've been working on this. I had been working on this probably since twenty twenty. And I looked at this as something that was going to help our downtown core be livable and walkable and vibrant and, and not just, you know, a place to drive through on a Saturday afternoon. There's nothing happening. And, and, you know, I, I looked at this as an opportunity for us to create something good for our community. And there was, I think, specific direction, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, from our previous mayor to move on this and try and, and get us somewhere since we've worked on it for so long. And, you know, there has been a lot of time spent on it. You spent a lot of time, I spent a lot of time. And so I feel like, I, I don't feel like it's a rush. And I feel like because of the elements that we're incorporating into it to have to go through the, the other processes, I, I think, I think we're going to get a product that we can be proud of. And I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what that, what that might look like.
Dudo.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. I, I think it's tremendous work and I think it has, it is exactly the, the right approach. I'm simply wondering, it's been, you know, how we prioritize this over everything else. You can talk about nothing happening and nothing's happened anywhere and what the residents are asking are for things to happen elsewhere. And that's my, strictly my point. I think it's a totally appropriate tool. And I think this is a group that's more, and you, I, I have a great respect for your abilities and what you've put together. I'm simply suggesting that we need to get some other things done first. And so far for the last year, this has been topic number one, the water thing. But that, all that was for a year. We've got no project plans for that. We, we're, we're lacking in delivering and other things. So I think it's a great tool, a big proponent of the tool. I do not want to see it go forward now. I think there's some things that, that should be adjusted, including the arc, the general architectural, you know, suggestions and things like that. I think it's a tremendous tool for when we can prioritize time to be spent on something like that rather than the litany of other things that we should be attending to. That's it, truly.
Were there other things that maybe would have gone on tonight's agenda but didn't as a result of this item?
No. Yeah, so thank you for, for tonight's agenda, you know, this was one of the things that, you know, has been important to kind of bring forward from the last one as well. Because reason being is if this was not something we were going to move forward on, why keep bringing it up and discussing about it? If it is something we're going to move forward on, let's activate our staff to do that. So it, 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 it is getting to a point where we need to start making decisions around these things instead of continuing to task staff with spending time on them. So that's why I felt it was important to kind of get this on the agenda, make some decisions around it and then move forward with it. So we free up more space to focus on the other things that we need to be focusing on.
If, if I mean, my inclination honestly would be to vote to continue this and work on it a little bit and bring it back. I don't know. Yeah, look on the ordinance a little bit and bring it back. But sometimes I know, well, yeah, we'll bring it back and it shows back up in a year. You know, I'm gonna have, if I can understand that. That's not, that's not my goal. It has to, for that to happen or to try and obstruct this moving forward by the comments I made. So then that may be at least the next question, would you foresee the opportunity on, relatively? Well, just bring it back soon, I guess.
Well, not, you, you're getting to exactly where I was. I feel like we're in the point in the discussion where I'd like to kind of bring it to council here. It sounds like we are getting close to being able to make a decision on how we'd like to progress with this. But there are a few things within the writing of the text that we might want to see adjustments to. So I was going to kind of ask Rick and just say, you know, what are, what are our options on how to move forward this? Could we, um, bring it to vote with?
Continue it to date certain with some direction to staff to maybe make a few edits in this.
And then that the public hearing is.
We make changes to it though. Unless they're just super minor ones, they might need to be opened back up for public comment again.
Go back to the planning zoning commission.
No, we would just continue this on to a date certain and we wouldn't have to do the whole.
Yeah.
Multiple requests or to open up traditional public comment for that's needing this continued to, it sounds like it's more mechanical at this point than conceptual.
So, so do you have enough from us to, to tweak the ordinance? To bring, to bring us back a different version at the next meeting or do you?
I have enough, again, conceptually, I may circle back with Councilman Verden, uh, one-on-one session to kind of work through his philosophy and the mechanical concepts.
I apologize for not reaching out to your.
Well, and I would say too, if there's any, you know, Tammy and I know Heather's friends, um, definition concerns, but I feel like they were potentially brought up by Mr. Burns' comments tonight. So if there's anyone else on council that has specific details that they'd like to bring to Brian's attention, this would be the window to do it, to make sure that the text.
Send it to Brian or I wasn't sure.
I'm sorry, I would, I would direct to just send direct to Brian. Brian individually, not with everyone, CC dot.
I guess my question is if we.
Because then my questions are in housing. So are we going to just keep prolonging in those definitions? And how we define how particular it is within this or do we move forward?
I think that the questions you had on housing and Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong here. Um, while are important discussions to keep having, I think they are more relevant to potentially the zoning. Changes that we're discussing versus the P U D amendment that is at the table tonight. So I think they're relevant um to the greater zoning discussion that is being continued to have. Am I?
Note of so that then.
Yes.
Okay.
So it sounds like we are at a point to have a motion here. Yes, I mean, I would be happy if you want to put it on. Um, my recommendation would be to not delay much further and put it on the February tenth agenda unless anyone has a problem with that. But that would be my recommendation is let's get this on the next agenda.
And would you be able to get kind of notice done and all things that are necessary to?
If you continue at this meeting to a date certain, we don't need to go through the whole.
So my recommendation would be February tenth.
Let's do it.
So I I would move to continue this public hearing to February twelfth, ten.
Second.
Also President Shay.
Hi.
Yes, Councilmember Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis. Yes, Councilmember Bergen.
Yes.
Councilmember Reed. Yes.
Thank you to all those who participated and provided comment. I think. It was really beneficial discussion science. I think. Going to go ahead and move us on to um item eight, new business. We're going to open up um with a presentation. This is the city of Bellevue fiscal year and twenty twenty four audit statements um from Dennis Brown. He is a representative from Workman and Company.
Thank you. It's good to be with you tonight, uh honorable counsel, honorable mayor and council. Uh, my name again is Dennis Brown. I'm a certified public accountant with the accounting firm of of Workman and Company. We have concluded our audit of the financial statements of the city of Bellevue, Idaho. And have issued our report on those financial statements dated the uh fourteenth of November twenty twenty four. Um, for that fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. We issued an unqualified or a clean opinion. Uh, I'll make a couple of comments on the 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 financial information. And then answer any questions that you might have. It's noted in the city of Bellevue that your general fund has a about a thirty eight percent carryover. Of a normal year's budgeted expenditures. Uh, that's pretty healthy for a small uh community and it shows fiscal responsibility on your part. And uh gives you about eight hundred and seven thousand dollar carryover for future uh activities in the general fund. Uh, the water and wastewater funds uh are a little uh little different because they're for profit enterprises. Um, we call them enterprise funds or proprietary funds. And those carryovers, uh although they look robust, they also include the physical assets of those particular systems. So uh the the actual um carryover of of usable resources. For the operations of the uh facility, uh about a a million dollars in each of the funds. Um, the uh. The budget uh to actual and that in the general fund, you had uh anticipated eating into your reserves. About four hundred thousand dollars in the in that particular period. But because of additional revenues, uh you actually had a car uh uh. A positive balance of of revenues over expenditures of of about two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. So it increased uh the the fund balance uh from that six hundred thousand to more, yeah, more up to that eight hundred thousand. Uh, so that's very helpful, helpful as well. Um, in reviewing the uh the minutes of these particular meetings and also uh viewing your meeting tonight. Um, uh, we're pleased to see the oversight that the council is taking. Uh, because you have the ultimate responsibility to oversee the and to take responsibility for the financial. Uh, activities of the city. And so uh we we love to see and to read uh questions about expenditures. Or other items that have to do with the the information that Shelley provides you. And uh and have good oversight in that particular situation. So having said that, I'll answer any questions that or I'll try and answer any questions that you might have on the financial statements.
Suzanne, I have a question about your statement that you do not express an opinion on the effectiveness of the city's internal control. Is that an additional service that that you offer? Is that something where you're assessing the the controls we have? To um be able to prove to you that the information that's being reported is accurate or what is that?
Yes, we don't, we don't issue an opinion on the internal controls, but we test internal controls. Uh, to give us assurance that uh that the financial information is free of material misstatements.
And uh the additional revenue that you noted, the two hundred and twenty five thousand, did that come from multiple sources or a single source?
It did. It did come. It did come from multiple sources from uh uh from from user fees and permits. Uh, a little more, I think, and even property taxes. Uh, you can take a quick glance back here in the budget to actual, just a second. Remind me of those uh particular items. Yeah, the the uh. Uh, the there, there was a, there was a bump in in state user revenues from the highway. Uh, uh, and and all of our, the cities that we uh that we audited this past year. Uh, had a a bump in uh in what was uh coming in uh from from previous years. Which is usually how you budget this. You look at like what comes in from previous years and say, okay, that's probably about what's going to come in for the next. Next budget cycle. But uh the highway funds, uh you know, increased about a hundred and thirty eight, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so that was uh, that was a fairly significant amount. That's available, available for use.
And they need that to make up what they need.
So just quickly back to the internal controls. When you say the city's internal controls, we present what our internal controls are to you or what? How is that defined? City's internal control?
We test the procedures that are happening inside your finance department. Uh, including the oversight that the that the council has. By reviewing your your minutes and the attached uh information that's the the finance department is giving to you. Uh, to determine that type of oversight. Uh, we we test direct, uh, we test revenue, we test expenditures. Um, and uh and to make sure that uh that there's a backup for all of the expenditures. And that uh uh that we have, we have availability to look at outside sources. For some of your major revenue sources that we also test uh against the records of the city to to see if they're accurate. Or or are 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 not materially misstated.
Thank you.
If any other questions for Dennis.
Yes, good evening, sir. The on page ten of the report. The first line in government funds that touched on at the close of the fiscal year, the city's governmental funds reported a combined ending fund balance of. Um, eight hundred and seven thousand dollars. And um I I guess my question is kind of more general. Is there a sweet spot where if the city maybe saved too much money, it's like, nah, you should. On the other hand, the fund gets too low and then you don't really have any rainy day fund. Is there a maybe a percentage or a range of percentage or some kind of sweet spot? And are we within it, I guess, for one, but also it that we might use as a guide in the future to say, yeah, that's. That's you've hit the sweet spot there. Congratulations.
Yeah, well, that there isn't necessarily a specific amount that is unique to any particular city. Uh, we we audit a particular city that has a hundred, a hundred percent of their uh uh annual expenditures as a carryover. Uh, and they, you know, the the citizens in that particular community don't seem to have a problem with that. They don't necessarily show up at a public meeting going, we need our user fees, you know, reduced. Uh, but uh, but then, and we have others that are, you know, they barely have maybe ten, fifteen percent. And because of that, they're they're really watching their cash flow. Uh, you know, your discussion earlier uh in the in the meeting, uh talking about the use of of cash. And and whether it sits idle or whether you want to put it uh at work. Uh, you notice you had about a hundred and I think a hundred and thirty some thousand dollars worth of uh interest revenue. Uh, that's, that's only happened in the last couple of years. If you go back three or four years, you're going to find that's uh, you know, twelve thousand dollars. Uh, but that's an issue of, you know, of of what the the economy is doing right now with uh with giving us uh interest on our. Uh, our uh savings, as it were, or at least our idle cash. And so uh in answer to your question, uh most of, we have some cities that actually buy ordinance. Say that they don't want to carry over more than about twenty five to thirty percent. Uh, just in order to be, I guess, uh more more responsible to the to the, you know, concerns of the community. Uh, but it's so if you had uh people standing, you know, coming up to your uh uh meeting and and. And voicing a concern that, hey, what about this eight hundred thousand dollars? Why don't you cut some of our our fees so that, you know, we don't have so much, then you might address that. Uh, but uh from a a as a personal uh note, and I've I've been in the auditing business now for. I I hate to even say it because you can see from my grain here, I've been around the block too, uh like your other council uh person. Um, but uh, but I I've seen uh, when I first started this, uh, the the economy was so bad. We used to have to, the cities used to have to go out and get tax anticipation notes. In order to cover the the time between uh that uh October, November, December. Uh, when uh, you know, cash was light until January and the tax revenues come in from the county. Uh, they actually had a lot of borrow money in order to make the city work. We haven't seen that in quite a number of years, uh, just because of a number of things. Uh, none, uh, one uh being that user fees are a little more robust than they were fifty fifty years ago. Uh, and uh, and also I personally believe that our councils are much more prudent. Uh, in the uh uh in the century we're living in. Uh, just because of the uncertain times and inflation and and crazy things that come up. Like having to repair a a major piece of equipment that wasn't budgeted for. All of those types of things enter into our decision making and our concern about carrying over reserves. So that uh we can use them. So uh, if I was in your position, I don't think thirty eight percent of a of an annual budget is a is is a bad thing at all. Or that is excess. Uh, certainly uh comfortable uh to allow you to uh to put it, put your money aside and make. Uh, some fairly decent return on it, so. I might have.
Becky.
Off on a tangent there a little bit, apologize, but yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
In the nonprofit world, it's considered gold standard to have six months, a minimum six months reserve. To operate in case of an emergency, like if you're gonna, we can cover all expenses for six months. So. That's it.
As a comment on that, because you have some fairly significant continuing dollars that come in. In the general fund, uh that that six months is, you know, probably not totally necessary. Because uh of the property tax revenues that come in and then the quarterly revenues that come in from the state. So you have a little bit better stable cash flow than than we have in maybe the nonprofit world where, you know, we're, we're looking for donations. More than we're getting uh taxes and user fees.
Questions for Dennis?
I always like to remind the council that I can, we can always talk to you one on one without having any kind of a public meeting disclosures. And so our contact information is on our report page and we would just love to talk to to you about the format of these financial statements. Are a little bit strange because governmental accounting is a little different than uh for profit accounting. Which many of you, if you're in the business community, are are dealing with balance sheets and 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 profit and loss statements and those types of things. And then you look, you look at the city's financials and you go, hmm, there's some strange looking formats. And we're happy to discuss that one on one. It's a little more cumbersome in an open meeting and and with your valuable time to get it down into the. To the generally accepted auditing standards that we have to apply. So don't hesitate to contact our office.
I just doing, I guess it's, we need a motion. Thank you very much. Yes, I'm welcome on motion.
I move to accept the city of Bellevue financial statements for the year ending September twenty twenty four as presented by Workman and Company.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Obenoff?
Yes.
Council President Shay?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Member David?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay. Goodbye.
Thank you, Sally.
Okay, moving on to item B here in new business. Discussion of twenty twenty five council priorities and recap from January sixteen, twenty twenty five. Special special common council meeting. Um. I will pass this over to Brian, but just a reminder that we held a a very productive three hour special. Um, common council meeting, um, where we did a large group think on council priorities. Um, for the next year moving forward, which uh Brian was then able to kind of put into our six priority categories. And then um create champions from our council to kind of spearhead with myself. Um, and department head. So I'd love to have Brian give me a bit of a presentation on that. And there can be more discussion we have on it, so.
All right, yes, thank you. Again, Brian Parker, Community Development Director. Uh, yeah, so you guys had a special meeting uh last week. If you track when things happen, um, it was really productive. I really appreciate you guys being there, being involved and jumping in. Playing all my games. Um, and so we had a whole bunch of different ideas and goals we wanted to get done the next year. And or get started on because some of these are going to be longer term uh processes. Uh, and so out of those, I kind of put them in some categories and came up with some general buckets. And I don't buckets is kind of words that I've been using, but I really want to be specific and explicit that there's a lot of overlap. And there's a lot of opportunities for collaboration, cross pollination, um. Entry that such, you know, so first category was capability communication. Uh, Councilmember Mahoney is our champion on that one, uh working on transparency initiatives, uh set up co enforcement. Uh, making sure that the community and the government, our city government are working together. And are both pulling our weight. Uh, housing security and for living, uh champion on that one is Councilmember Obenoff. Uh, Shelly on Plain County Housing Authority is our liaison. Uh, there's a lot of work here needs to be. Uh, for a broader conversation on uh lowering the cost of living generally and things that may also. Annual benefits, uh ventilation, energy, water, conservation, things like that. I think there's a lot of opportunities to think creatively. And holistically about. Next was court decision making, government governments, Suzanne Reed, our our council champion on that one. Uh, really getting down to the basics and nitty gritty of what are we doing here? Well, how we make these decisions? How we make sure that we're serving the public as best we can. Uh, infrastructure and services, Councilmember Bergen, uh, will bring that one, uh. A lot of big public works projects ongoing and will be moving forward in the next coming years, and I think uh, having your expertise on that will be very valuable, uh, also being on Parks Committee to make sure we're utilizing those public assets as well. And then our enhancements, uh, Councilmember Shay is our champion on that one, uh, already again on Borough. There's a lot of opportunity for collaboration there, uh, you also have a lot of experience and know how things work around here and I can really uh make sure that the easy ones are getting done in the next years. Then finally, service collaboration, our Councilmember Davis is the champion on this one. Um, there's a lot of different nonprofits and uh other government agencies and different uh, opportunities for uh, general public services and make sure that the community is getting all its needs met. And again, with Councilmember Davis, uh, connection and experience, uh, we can make sure that we're not overlapping unnecessarily and that everything is done, that needs to be done. Next steps, our department heads have kind of been given the rundown on this as well, and they're gonna be uh, developing individual work plans, uh, for the next year, the next fiscal year of things that we want to get done as a department and kind of play in how these get incorporated into that. Uh, which will guide the budgeting and start a cycle moving forward. Uh, and then again, uh, I will probably be bugging you guys periodically as I think of other things that you guys can do in your different categories. Um, and then, yeah, work together. That'll save pretty question.
Yeah, I guess I have a couple, so opportunities and engagement, so for what the new the housing, security, and affordability, number four, um, working the staff to explore grant opportunities. Um, I feel like I have a need, I need to partner with Tammy on that, she has the top-notch grant experience in this room, I do not. So if you have time or space, um, to work with me or anybody else at the table on that, and then the other part I was looking at was the under enhancement with Diane, since I it's kind of helped form a events committee, I'd like to, you know, just help you kind of take that and run with it and support you.
I welcome that.
That's my only feedback I had on it, I was just thinking like, oh, we could work together, maybe.
And I think just to, you know, echo with Brian where these aren't necessarily exclusive bullet points, right? And I think that there will be shared interest um within, you know, these six priorities and there will be cross-collaboration, of course. And um, what we would ask is just what you just did to say, hey, this is where I see the collaboration being possible with this other council person, or I have experience in this, how can I help you? So that's, that's exactly what we're hoping to see more of, but um, just working with this council to create um a level of ga- engagement and um just kind of, and 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 pride and and champion uh of a lot of the work that needs to be done at the city. We talk about getting back to basics, getting it to foundation, and a lot of the work that needs to be done. Well, uh, we also know we have limited staff, limited resources, but we have a lot of passion at this table right here and a lot of knowledge. So if there, you know, are ways in which this council can continue to provide its knowledge, its time, its expertise to then help staff take things even further, I I I feel that this year our goal is to achieve as much as we can um, within these focus areas collaboratively. And and so we appreciate you being at the council meetings and being prepared for the council meetings, but we would love to see how much further we could take the city with a little more collaboration and effort in the council too, so. And I wanted to kind of jump in on the presentation a little too with Brian, um, because the strategic planning was a brainchild of mine to to work towards this year with this council in particular, um, and just create a little bit more direction for council and then for staff, and so that's where the work plans play into it and um, understand that we acknowledge and hear what is coming from the citizens on what they'd like us to be focusing on. So I hope when we look at these six categories that you can find as a citizen, um, an element of what you have concern that we are going to address this year. Um, and what I will hope to then present to you even more, council, staff, citizens, is um, kind of timelines of how these will come to be, um, because while there is a lot of work to be done, um, as we've seen, it can get delayed and fall by the wayside and all of that, so next steps are definitely department head work plans and then timeline this out. So this isn't just a pie-in-the-sky idea, this is actual actionable things that we will be working on. Um, you know, may they be ordinance, uh, code, zone, and then any of those kind of brass tech things or um, the reviews, you know, within department of fees that we've been discussing and discussing, discussing. So how does that all get spearheaded? So, um, a lot of this is the creativity of this council and then the need of the city to uh have some tangible goals and work product that we as staff need to contribute and then present to our citizens, so. There will be more on this topic, but this was just a basically overview and hopefully everyone's satisfied with their categories and their champion titles for this year. Um, and if, and if there's anything
Get awards.
Um, and of course, you know, there's, there's more elaboration to be done within each category, this was just the the high overview to present tonight.
I'm super proud, you know, I, Sean and I go way back, I know you do, I was on council in two thousand and and it's nice to see and always try, like your point, we, people bring stuff up and then you you get excited about it or you talk about it and act like somebody's gonna do something about it and then it just kind of goes to the wayside, so I, I stepped up and ran again because I believe that we are moving in that direction and and I'm really excited to see the direction you're helping lead us in, so thank you.
So should we have proposals for the next meeting or what should we do? Based on?
Where we are at in the process, thank you. Um, we are looking for, um, we are waiting on our department head plans. Um, and then that will just dictate a little bit more of our our timeline because there needs to be kind of collaboration of their timeline and and what our project plans are. Um, we would welcome uh proposals if you have them ready um to go of some of your individual thoughts.
Yeah.
And I would just say, just kind of, you know, broken down into what your priorities may be, love that.
Action, action, small actionable.
Exactly, and I would say whatever you're proposing, actionable, um, action-oriented, uh, timeline-based and, you know, kind of the thought process behind it. Um, I, our next steps, Brian and myself, is uh collecting the department head plans and um then also, you know, hearing from the community. Um, town hall, open kind of communication and also um taking any kind of comments through throughout the year as they, as they come through to make sure that the priorities are still aligning with what we would like to see, so um, we welcome proposals, um, but next step is waiting for department head draft plans.
So is that premature in sending Tom the, the um customer comment about the lights, did you get your little project? From clerk, clerk, hello?
I would say definitely tasking, yeah. Testing is great, but I would say tasking any council at this time.
Well, not tasking, just making him aware of of a, of a comment from a resident about those. Like, where should that go?
I think that's a little premature and I think that's, I think, uh, not that, I think we have a little bit more organizing to do. Um, and then a little bit more discussion um internally with staff about um the appropriateness channel of the channels.
Yes.
So if it should go to department heads first and then um asking for council help after that is usually the appropriate chain of command for that.
Mayor, is there a deadline for those uh plans from?
From staff, yes, before February sixth, so we'll be seeing those.
Okay, okay.
Thank you for that question.
Yeah, and and don't forget to take like when, like you were saying, we don't have to solve everything by next month. You've done an amazing job bringing some great things, tools to the table that I think are are pretty cool, so. You've got, you're ahead of the game already, you're just ahead of the game already.
No, no, just there in the tour, just like trying to remember, yeah, coming in now, so at least we have.
Yeah, okay, wonderful. Any other questions for Brian or myself?
Thank you, Brian.
Great, thank you for taking the time to do this.
And Tony, we're happy to supply these six priorities for you to reference throughout the year to track our progress.
It's um very easy to work with Brian, and he's getting me information in a timely manner and it is meant to follow your conversations and work pretty closely, so it won't be very difficult.
Thank you. And for side of that, I'll go and close that discussion. We'll move on to item C. So this is um consideration and approval of Resolution twenty-four oh five, authorizing the submittal of a raised grant application for collector broadly designed service on behalf of the City of Bellevue, Idaho. Um, Brian, again, with the presentation here.
All right, yes, thank you, Mr. Durney, Brian Parker, Community Development Director. Uh, those of you who are on council or were watching at this point, uh, we, uh, this last fall received seventy-five thousand dollars uh to initiate transportation master plan update, uh, with the hired Ford Grant Associates, uh, to be a consulting uh firm on that, uh, and they're making progress in that front, um, but they also identified uh this great grant opportunity uh as part of the uh, Reduction Act, uh, to uh, provide up to a million dollars of design work for engineering so we can have shovel-ready projects uh for future uh grants or other capital availability, um. And there's no city match required, so it's entirely grant-funded, um. We're getting the details finalized at this point, but the engineers, the deadline is the thirtieth to get it submitted. Uh, the collectors, I think we've identified, uh, second and fifth, running north and south, and then pine and town. And seventh, also, I believe, uh, then it wraps around to the uh dead portion of cedar so that we could do some design work to make that a nicer uh facility than dirt barriers and the closed-out park area. And so, uh, one of the things we need uh to submit the application, the resolution from you all, uh, approving these little so that's what's still pretty good, right?
Excuse me, could you clarify the collectors again? So I I got pine and elm.
I know.
And second and fifth.
Second, fifth, and seventh, except seventh wraps around to the uh closed-out portions here. And this is all subject to change if they determine that it is necessary for the application this way, but that's our concept of this fucking time, but two days to finalize.
Is so what plan is this go against? The, a plan that's already been established about repaving Bellevue, is that it?
Uh, so we do have an existing transportation master plan.
Okay, and that's, and that discusses repaving Bellevue and what the priorities are and that, and yes?
There is a capital improvement component and a cultural classification map to that, uh, but also working with staff as this grant became apparent, or myself, Chris Johnson, Public Works Director, Casey McGee, Street Supervisor of what we need to be prioritizing, what modifications uh need to be having.
Well, the only reason I ask is we have, we seem to have a habit of going out and we get grants and we create these plans that are they fade with time, right? Suddenly it's twenty twenty-five and the plan's from twenty twenty-two. And we paint these huge projects and we fund these projects and actually Sean was the big one saying it last year that we couldn't even pay a block for less than three million dollars. So is there anything that this could be applied to that was smaller, say, paving the alleys or? That's why I'm asking, uh, uh, so I I just kind of wonder how we decide that. And I, and I also feel like we've seen with the water project with Merrick is they've been looking for money to keep doing work so they keep getting paid. That, the drinking water proposal is, you know, there's stuff in there that that's already changed in the last, you know, year. Um, the difficulties that the street market and things like this, so is there anything in this amazing opportunity that we could actually put to work and make change in the next year? Like, actually do?
The, there is a capital component to the infrastructure or the size reduction act and specifically the raised grant. Um, you are much higher rated for selection on that grant if you are already have all the engineering work done and specifically had it all done through a planning grant, uh, which is what this is for. And there's also a capital match.
This is to update the master plan, right? And then after we went there, master plan, we
Master plan is a different grant that's already been there.
Seventy-five thousand.
It's in process.
It's already in process.
Yes.
But our consultants identify this grant opportunity for us, they've been helping with the uh application. Uh, this is to get to design work, engineering, uh, design work, so we have documents stand ready for construction, so when we get the next round of funding and we're ready to apply for that, we can actually start doing work.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just putting this out here because again, so the first transportation thing, the seventy-five thousand dollars for this master plan, right? That we won't be able to do for a very long time due to the right, I mean, we've already seen it, or we've done something, and Sean certainly spoke to that quite a bit last year, but is there anything that we could make the first plan smaller so then we could like do this part and then we could actually pave something, does that make sense? Like, can we target something to actually be done, that's actual concrete in a two-year span instead of a ten-year span?
So I think, I hear what you're saying, I think the opportunity there is to look at what we have budgeted for this year and or going into next year through our Public Works and Streets Department, and what we're looking at here are um larger scale grants to cover uh, master planning, which we have, design and engineering, and then going after grants for larger product, projects that then are implemented. So I think there's an opportunity to to look at how we could utilize these grant opportunities for larger scale products and projects and also look at other grant opportunities and or our budget opportunities for short-term
And this is where, you can only do this one for a big project, it's gotta be for the master plan.
I know, I've seen Chris does his hand up, but I want to finish the slot and then I want to get to Chris, no, it's okay, keep going.
So this is for the design work, future funding opportunities, whether it be grants or just out of our street fund or wherever we're collecting money from, does not necessarily have to be the whole product, the whole, everything we've designed all at once.
We're not committing to anything specific right now, just let's go try and get it.
Try to get the money.
Just try to get it, yeah, okay, I was, I was trying, I should have just said it long enough.
I'm gonna ask, yeah, go ahead, um, Chris Johnson, Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mayor, um, you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so like Brian's trying to say, uh, this is just laying the base work for future projects. Uh, what I've known from working with the NRCS for five years, um, working with systems around the state on uh different projects, you need to have something shovel-ready if you really want to be, um, if you really want to be looked at and taken seriously. A lot of the systems will come in and they'll put in applications, but they don't really have a a full idea. What this is doing for us is providing direction and projects we want to focus on, so we are saying we are ready to do this, and now we can apply for grants elsewhere that will back this up, um, but these things like you, like we've talked about earlier tonight, there's grant cycles, um. The, the previous seventy-five thousand dollar uh transportation plan that we're working on the study and that was approved three years ago, but never, nobody ever took the lead on it to get it going forward, and so we've gotten moving forward with that one, um, we're working with them. We are starting to make steps, we have a very tiny roads budget and streets budget. What we can do with the amount of money that we have right now, I mean, where you were talking about today, are we gonna buy, you know, five tons of asphalt and try to get some better patches done? Or do you think we can find money and do a section of second or another street that that needs work? And with the price of materials and everything, we cannot do it without uh some grant funding or or additional funds coming in from somewhere, whether that comes from increasing the lock tax Some grant funding or or additional funds coming in from somewhere, whether that comes from increasing the lot tax. Um, to incre- to increase our s- our streets budget, um. But in our streets budget, we're pretty poor and we're doing the best that we can. And Casey's been doing a great job. I think this is what we've seen. The improvement of him taking ownership, cleaning the alleys, paving. We're still trying to get out there to uh scrape the ice off there. So when the next storm comes in here in February, um, we're ahead of the game. It's just. The, the timing and everything, people driving to work. And when the snow's first thing in the morning, we have to let the traffic get out. And so we got behind the curve. Just the way everything compacted, but this is all about. This is, this is basically free money to do studies that allows us to get better ground opportunities that can get projects on the ground. Thank you.
Fabulous. I just wanted to make sure that it was not applied for in a way that was. That locked us into a project that was too large for us to reasonably, so maybe, that's great.
Logical question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sir.
Well, the way I look at it is. This raised grant is a precursor to us getting some big funding. And without the plans in place and the engineering, which I mean, we could have potentially a million dollars worth of engineering done. Through this grant and then we're shovel ready to go, look. We need two million to do or five million to go do this project and our chances of getting that funding to actually do it. Are so greatly increased by having. By having set the stage, these, these steps are precursors to getting that money.
Yes, thank you.
Comment, chief?
I, I mean, I, I think it's great to pursue these grant opportunities, you know, any opportunity that's available. And I think the city. Did well with that last year from my reading of the materials to pursue grant opportunities and receive some of that money and, I mean, I'm. It's kind of nice that there was some shovel work that could be done and not just engineering, um. But this is what it is, right? I I guess, and so. It's kind of accept that. I, I mean, I, I might. Have some quibble with what's considered a collector road, but um. But, you know, I think we should pursue the grant, you know, when the timeline is now, it sounds like.
And I would say, you know, this grant is coming now. And there will be other grants that could potentially be more shovel ready focused and all of that. So I think it's important to, to note that, uh. Brian is out there looking for things constantly. Um, department heads are looking for things constantly. This just happens to be the one being presented at this time. Um, bringing it to for consideration to see if we want to throw our hat in the ring for it.
Is this federal money, I assume? Is there federal money still being allocated?
It is uh allocated through the infrastructure or the Inflation Reduction Act um, through next year and then there is an. A reauthorization opportunity should come this.
I make a motion that we uh adopt resolution twenty four oh five authorizing. The city of Bellevue supporting the, this middle of a rebuilding American. Infrastructure with sustainability and equity grant application for engineering design services. For collector roadways.
Second.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Member Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Yes.
Member Ogdenoff?
Yes.
Council President Shay?
Yes.
And for clarification too, like we don't. Brian won't arbitrarily or no one arbitrarily decides what a collector street is. It's really. Done through the, that assessment and the transportation plan based on. They'll say there are things that, that contribute to why, why streets are called collector streets, so.
I'm not sure, is that some of your, every?
So. Part of the transportation master plan will be an update to our functional classification map. For the specific purposes of this grant application, staff worked with their consultants at Ford Grant and the local highway technical assistance council. Uh, to make sure that the grant, the streets identified um are both, uh, since Ford Grant has. Street data now on the center of the need and the quality of street conditions currently. Um, the streets that need work. Uh, and the streets that uh are most likely to be competitive in the grant application, the criteria for getting money, uh, which. There are the large differences on uh providing access to schools, parks, uh, job opportunities, things like that, and so.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, we're gonna move on to item D, consideration approval of resolution twenty four oh six. Authorizing the mayor to execute a letter of support for ITD's fiscal year twenty twenty five rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability. And equity raise program grant application for the state highway seventy five Bellevue to Broadway Run Improvement Project. Um, this is something that ITD has asked cities to sign on to, um. And there's a letter of support that was included in your packet, um. I wanted to just bring Chris Johnson on for this one, um, cause he has a little more history of the project. Um, and kind of saw this come through as, you know. Should we sign on? Should we not sign on? So I, I wanted to open this up for discussion, just kind of see if, um. Chris Johnson had any opinions if it would be uh not beneficial for us to sign on to a competitive. Grant uh letter and what your opinions were on that.
No, I think uh, I, I don't really see a negative in the city getting involved with it. Um, it's a betterment for the valley as a whole. Um, we still have, they've, they've done a couple of public comment periods. And uh, we still will have time to comment on any improvements that are either in our section of town or. Um, directly affect us north of town. So in all, um, it's just getting the money that, that they're finally starting to understand. Uh, how much of a disrepair that seventy five is in. And then with uh, a few other. Uh, with the traffic issues and like widening in a, in a couple areas, um, looking at the appropriate, uh. Uh, traffic lights or um directional uh way we're gonna go with it, but. You know, this is something that should have happened twenty years ago, um, where we should have had four lanes going all the way up to catch them. And now we're finally addressing how bad the traffic problem is and. I think if anybody's gone up to catch them in the last six months and seen how much the widening project and getting four lanes has done to improve traffic at the north end. Um, having, having them come through and identify how we can improve, um. You know, mid valley and south valley, um, is gonna be huge.
Thank you.
I would only make one little comment too about the letter itself. It spells Bellevue wrong. Isn't. State Highway seventy, S H seventy five Bellevue to Broadway Run.
It must have been, this was sent to us.
Sorry, in the subject. But.
Yeah, right there. Yeah, so this was sent to us from ITD, so we will. Make that adjustment for the thing for attention.
Do, do we have a list of the right of way purchases that are expected? And are any of them in Bellevue?
Right of way purchases?
No, there's already established easements that the highway has. There isn't any right of way, uh. Purchases I'm been aware of from the project.
Um, okay, they listed and they, so have they finally finished the design? Cause on the website, they still have it listed as outstanding.
They have.
It's not finished yet.
Would this include that section of Main Street in Bellevue where we only have three lanes?
The bottom loop?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is the, the, the main street ITD project.
So as far as from Bellevue, it goes from Deanna Road North.
So yes, that's enough. Anyway, that's been at the table.
So and, and this is just, um. The mayors of the ta- of the city signing on to participate in the grant, but there's still, you know, we still are public works director and, you know. The city of Bellevue is so very much involved in the process of, of the project. This is just basically. Us attaching our name to uh ITD going after the, the raised grant for. Highway seventy five project.
It, it seems like we have to. If it goes through and we're not on there. Right? There'll be, there'll, we'll get even worse than we already get.
I think we, um, in my opinion, in, in, increase our, by, by signing on, if there's more grant funds, we increase the, uh. Hopefully, the money that's going to the project and the value of what it can bring to Bellevue's uh highway seventy five would be the hopes, you know. To look at it that way.
I think there's more harm to holding out than playing ball.
Other, other mayors, when Haley and catch him sign the letter similar to this.
They, I think they all received, you know, requests to, to, to sign on for it. So. We're a little late in the game on this. It was, it basically by. I think they're, um, the twenty ninth or thirtieth to receive this back, so. That's why it's ending up on, on this agenda. I think with just some of the transitions that got lost a little bit in the emails, so.
Make a motion, we adopt resolution number twenty four oh six, authorizing the mayor. To execute a letter of support for ITD's fiscal year twenty twenty five rebuilding American. Infrastructure with sustainability and equity raise program round two grant application for the state highway seventy five improvement project.
Second. Council President Shay?
Hi.
Councilmember Ogdenoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Mahoney?
Here we go.
Councilmember.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Thank you for the discussion on that. At this time, I would. Take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.